How's the baby?
He's doing great, thank you. I have such a great brain.
Good evening and welcome. Today is Monday, January 13th, 2020. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. If we could start please with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have just come from executive session. We will be returning after the public meeting to finish up on a personnel matter. And so therefore, we have not adjourned. We're going to start tonight. If you recall at our last meeting, we let the public know that we started the year as a board with a board retreat on Saturday, January 4th, I believe it was, Saturday morning. And one of the things that we had discussed was the introduction of the three-minute address during the public session. So we came up with a way that we thought would best take in the concerns that were addressed at that meeting and that at the beginning of each meeting, from here on out to the rest of the year, we're going to try it this way and see how it works. We will address as a board some of the questions that came up. And this would be our way of responding and not taking away from the time of the three minutes of what's being addressed to us and that we would go through that and we would discuss it as a board along with the superintendent or wherever we felt appropriate and who could best answer some of the subjects that came up. So we're going to try it. It's a little new and different for us and we'll see how it goes. And we ask for your patience as we try a new format. First discussion was the status of some ongoing projects. Right off the bat tonight, we do have a presentation tonight from K G and D, but the question of presentations came up. Ms. Goodman, was there anything else you want to add to that?
Right. So yes, K G and D will providing an update on the capital projects, which I know was one of the questions that people asked about. And they also mentioned the strategic plan. And the administration is eager to share our work that is being done in our buildings. The board anticipates the following workshop topics, which were already planned at the beginning of the year to present on this. So on February 3rd, please note, there will be presentations on professional development, strategic plans, and our social emotional learning goals. On March 2nd, there will be a presentation on the budget. And on March 30th, the presentation on the budget will include part of our strategic plan, which includes diverse learners, contemporary teaching and learning. May 11th is the board hearing. And June 1st, we expect to have presentations from a variety of teachers on every level about what they are doing in the classroom because that is the most, that's where the rubber meets the road. So we want to make sure that we are very academically focused and that we stay focused on our strategic plan. Thank you.
Okay. Also came up was the status of the contract negotiations for both the teacher and the support staff. The district's been working with both unions towards our contract settlements. The C S E A and the district do have a M O A in place and that will be up for a vote. Shortly amongst the membership, the T T A is still in negotiations. We are moving forward and have already had a couple of meetings this year and have a couple of meetings on the calendar going forward. We also have opened up a line of communication with the new leadership of the T T A and we feel positive with the way the direction and the relationship is moving and we hope to have settlements in the near future on both of those to report back to you.
Michelle, just to clarify, MOAs, memorandum of agreement?
Right. So that means that both sides have come to an agreement, but now it's out for, it's got to go to a vote of the membership. Okay. Also, Amy, if you could talk about the special education, the changes there in your, in that department and the interim of special education?
Right. So that was brought up also at our last public meeting. Ms. Lori Bauer is a part-time director, interim director of special education. She works three days a week. She is supervising the special education program under my continued leadership and she will remain for the rest of this school year. Since her retirement several years ago from the Bedford Central School District, she has filled many interim director positions throughout Westchester County and she also is a consultant for many school districts throughout Westchester County. As a seasoned administrator, she has a lot of work. She was a teacher prior to that, but she has been an administrator for many, many years. And she will provide leadership and utilize her knowledge of best practices within our special education program. There was a question about how she was hired and why it didn't come to board approval. Ms. Bauer was hired through a COSER with Northern Westchester Bosse's. Such COSER relationships do not require board action to appoint the specific contractor supplied by Bosse's to the district. I just want to say, I have the utmost confidence in Ms. Bauer. I've known her for a very long time. She has one of the best reputations in the county for a very long time for special education and I think we're very fortunate to have her. I would also like to say that as the last interim director, I am continuing to be very involved. She's here three days a week. I am also involved on a daily basis with special education in the district. Thank you.
Okay. The next topic is a solution to the safety issues at Cywinoy Boulevard. If you recall, right before the meeting, actually that day, there was an incident on Cywinoy. And Ms. Goodman, if you can just give us an update as to what's happened since then?
Okay. So as you know, I had a very productive meeting. I think I said that when we met or maybe it was right after with the district administrators, the building principal and the assistant principal in December. We also had our consultant, Alteris Consulting, which is our safety consultant, Lieutenant Jensen from the Eastchester Police Department, and Supervisor Calavita. So we looked at what can we do to make the street safe for our students? And it was suggested that we install metal bollards, which are universally agreed upon to be stronger, more secure, and safer as a permanent solution to Cywinoy. The option will provide a better barricade as well as allow us to open the street for emergencies, plowing, and of course dismissal. Our student's safety is at the forefront of everything that we do. We are currently soliciting prices. We have gotten one and we need, you know, three and then we will make a decision, but we will shore up Cywinoy so that students can use it safely.
Okay. Great. Okay. Also, the, there was a question regarding the status of the New York State Comptroller's investigation. As I had stated at the last meeting, the Office of the New York State Comptroller conducted a risk assessment in November of 2019. It's our understanding that the district will not be subject to a larger audit at that time, at this time. We've also been informed by our attorney that the New York State Comptroller's Office has not communicated with members of the public, nor would they. And when there is additional information to report on, it will come through the proper channels. So you will hear from us on that, if there is anything going forward on that. Also, there was a couple of, a couple of community members who asked specifically about why Mr. Albano has left. And as we had stated then, and we'll have to state it again, and actually read a formal statement at the time that we accepted the agreement, I will go ahead and read it again because it is specific to a personnel matter. But for legal and privacy reasons, the district is unable to comment on personal matters. The board and Mr. Albano did come to a mutual agreement to have him commence a leave in December so that he can concentrate on his next steps professionally and the district can start its transition into new leadership. And we appreciate that such change can be difficult, but we are hopeful that the remainder of the year will progress smoothly as we concentrate on business of educating the students of Chaco. We thank you for understanding and for supporting the leadership at this time. Superintendent search. There was questions regarding the transparency in the superintendent's search. Does one of the chairs of the superintendent's search want to take that on?
Just, we have Jim Grado here today, going to do a presentation from Bosse's, from Lower Westchester Bosse's. Jim is the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum for Bosse's. And he is going to, along with Dr. Coles, both Jim and Dr. Coles are working closely together to provide us with guidance and, and the whole search process. So we had a meeting with both Jim and Harold and then since then, we also had another forum. At that forum, we had, the feedback was again, the clarification in regards to the timeline, how committees down the road will be formed, the process of the selection. So thank you, Jim, for being here tonight and he will hopefully answer some of those questions more specifically. As far as open and closed search, we'll talk to the transparency in terms of that. But I want to thank those that did come out to the forum and, and the feedback was again very helpful. And any feedback, the survey, I think we're up to 270, which is a nice number. And we have read all of the feedback and we are taking everybody's feedback into account. So that's pretty much.
Can I jump in and make a comment also? I just also want to mention too, I think some of the comments that we got last time around to, and I don't know if I misinterpreted them, insinuated, I think, that we were sort of behind the apple on this process or that we weren't forward-thinking, I think was the term that was used. I just want to address that because I think that's a little bit of a misconception. We started working on this project from day one of this school year, meaning when the new board, the existing, the current board was convened and the new school year started, which was the appropriate time to start that, we started right away on that. I think maybe the reason why people think that way is that the point in this process by which we started engaging with the community only started a few weeks ago. But a lot of work was put into this from the beginning to that point. We needed to research search firms, we needed to accept proposals, we needed to review them, we needed to interview search firms, firms. And then we had to make a decision on that, which of course we went with Bosse's. And then we had to meet with them initially and get some of the groundwork done. So a lot of work was done to get to the point in which we started interacting with the community. I don't want the community to think that that's when we started. Not, not true at all. And we are exactly, we exactly are on schedule. The whole point was to get to the point where we could post the position over the holidays through January and we are obviously there. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. Thanks Pete and Laura. I know a lot of time is being spent on that. Okay. Where are we? Okay. Questions regarding the costs of the interim administrators and recent administrative moves. Lee, can you take that on regarding what the cost has been to the district?
Sure. So I did an analysis of all the current costs that we are now paying for the administration and the administrative moves that we made in this fiscal year. And I determined that, and when we took a look at Mr. Albano's settlement, Ms. Goodman's change in position on December 2nd, from special ed director to superintendent, and the addition of Lori Bauer in December as a special ed director, there were additional costs as well as offset costs, but the net cost to the district was approximately $253,000. And that takes into account all the administrator salaries and includes the additional cost of Mr. Albano's payment, which extends into the 2020-2021 school year. The net savings in addition, there was included in that a net savings for the interim athletic director this year of approximately $10,000. And this also includes a net savings for the new interim director of special education. As she is only working three days a week, the savings is estimated to be approximately $56,000. So would you want me to continue on the next portion on that?
Yeah, there were some questions regarding the terms of Ms. Goodman's agreement.
So Ms. Goodman and the board negotiated a compensation package, which includes a per diem salary and payments for benefits that she was otherwise entitled to. Her daily rate is just $50 more than the rate she was making as interim director of special education, $50 per day more. And while the contract does state that she is not entitled to other fringe benefits, the board did provide a payment in the amount of the established buyout for health insurance offered to other employees, including Mr. Albano, as part of her compensation package. The overall compensation package provided to Ms. Goodman is well within the established market for experienced interim superintendents in Westchester County.
Thank you, Lee. There was a question regarding, or a comment that was made regarding the novels for the fifth grade, that they had not received them and that there was, that that was due to a budget issue and if you can touch on that?
Sure. I can clarify that. No, there was a leak over the summer. Some books were destroyed and replaced. Mr. Marash received the new novels before break and a plan was put in place to start the novel study in January. So the teachers didn't have a complete set for their novel studies until then. The order for the remaining books that need for a complete classroom set was also added and also the damaged books were also reordered. The books for the first novel study, which is called Dark Water Rising, have arrived and the novel study has commenced. Anticipated arrival of the next books for the next novel study is January 31st. This allows ample time before the anticipated start date of the next novel study, which is March 4th. Some of the work, for some of you who are interested in what they do with novel study is, and actually they pick great books. They work on vocabulary, they will have book clubs, reading comprehension, and using the writer's writing revolution for activities based on the novel, which will be differentiated. They have collaborative discussion, they will examine story elements and note-taking and there's a lot of good work that comes out of that. They will be able to study all their novels and they have, again, everything's been ordered and has already commenced and they're enjoying it. Thank you.
Next was the request by the community member for seven-member board and the petition that was discussed and for increased community involvement. I know Teraz made some comments on that at the last meeting. Did anyone else want to discuss their thoughts on the seven-member board and moving that forward?
Well, I just want to say that to follow up, obviously I said that I don't think it's in the best interest for our district at this time, but I think that our retreat was helpful in establishing committees where we can then access different members in our community who have talents and can give guidance in certain areas, such as wellness and we were talking about facilities and advocacy and having regular committee meetings and chairing them properly with agendas so that we make productive change for the district.
Yes. I would just say that I totally agree with that, everything that Teraz just said. I too am not a, in favor of the seven-member board increase. I don't think that's the issue. I think if folks think that there needs to be more interaction or more involvement with the community, I think the additional committees is the way to go. I think given the size of our community, the size of our district, the amount of board members we have is appropriate. And my biggest concern, I don't have any problem obviously with more people being involved. My biggest concern with expanding the board is just given the amount of participation we've had in the past, people are willing to be board members, which is a tough job. I don't think we'll have enough, just based on historic, historical turnout and candidates, where we'll have a contest, a real election for each of those board seats. And I think that's not good. I think, I think there does need to be a contest. I think there needs to be an election that matters where there's a choice. And I just am very fearful that a seven-member board in the district is small, they'll be basically walk-ons. And I don't think that's a good thing. I'm just speaking frankly. So that's, that's my reason why, why I don't think it's a good idea. I also went back and looked a little bit, I know you did a little research.
You can say six years, we didn't even have enough people to fill.
Right, right. And then I did another kind of research as well. I actually looked back the last three and a half of years to see how many times the board has voted on something that was split or not unanimous. And it was only like five times was, was the votes not unanimous. Now, obviously, it's a lot of discussion, a lot of preparation that goes into getting to that point. My point being is that I don't think additional people is going to help the process at all. It's just, it's just my, my feeling. But the risk of, it may help a little bit, but the risk that we take by not having a good, robust debate and elections, I think outweighs whatever benefit we would get from one or two more people on the board. So that's, that's my feeling on it.
Right. And I, and I just comment on that too, that I went back and forth myself, thinking that seven, you know, more sometimes is better. There's more conversation, there's more representation. But after you did research, Teraz and Pete, you know, and seeing those numbers and really thinking about it, I do think that we won't have a robust debate. We won't have vetting and trying to, I mean, going up and sitting on a stage and debating is hard, you know, it's, and campaigning is hard and it should be. And I think you should do your homework and you should really want to be on here for the right reasons and do the, and come on knowing it's going to be hard work and put yourself out there. So I think it shouldn't be taken lightly and I think that it shouldn't be something that someone can walk onto. I would be concerned by that. So I do agree.
Yeah. But certainly like we talked about at the debate, you know, expanding committees like we talked about, I think is the way to go. It is a way to maybe address the core issue there. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. And that is pretty much sums it up, right? I, I do appreciate the patience. We are going to try it this way. We're happy to hear back from you on it, but we want to be open to what your concerns are. I do want to also remind the community that the board does have office hours before every regular scheduled meeting. And if anyone would like to meet with the board, two representatives are available and you have to make an appointment with our district clerk the week before the meeting to let us know. So again, that's another opportunity. Also, Ms. Goodman is going to have some more scheduled coffees that she has put out to the public, so there's a lot of opportunity to speak with us and we really encourage everyone to do so and thank everyone really for participating and bringing their concerns forward. We will now go on to the regular comments of the board. Teraz?
Regular comments?
Well, whatever your regular comments, I'm sorry, other than the comments we just made.
Okay. Yes. So I just want to say, I'm very excited. I think we are off to a very good and a strong start. I have been impressed with Ms. Goodman's ideas that you brought forth to the retreat and I'm excited. I'm excited we have two people sitting up here at the table tonight because I think that they're honestly what's most important. They're our students and they're why we're all here and dedicating our time and effort into making Chaco the best place possible. So thank you for joining us tonight. And of course, wishing everybody a happy and healthy 2020.
Pete?
I don't have much else to add. I know we took a lot, a lot of time. And I know one of the big recurring themes of the last meeting though, was just the issue of instability or the concern about stability. And I just want to say, I hear you loud and clear, I think we all do. I think it is something, there is a concern and it is something that we're very much aware of. But I will say, just to give you my perspective as an individual board member, you know, in the notion of stability, I'm not saying it's not important. I think stability is important in any organization, in any organization. But I don't put it above putting the proper, people in the proper place. I think that's more important in an organization. I think making sure, I'm just talking, I'm just speaking in general now. I'm not speaking about anything in any particular position or any particular role. I'm just speaking in general. I think that an organization needs to make sure it has the right people on the bus in the right place and that's more important than stability. Stability is a nice thing to have and I think we want to get to a place where we put the right people in place and then have that stability. But I do think putting a premium on, on making adjustments when they need to be made, is very, very important. So I just wanted to make that, that comment. But definitely hear you loud and clear, we've, we've had a lot of turnover in the last couple of years. I think the way to address that is to take a look at our hiring process, get the right people in place who make those hirings. I think one thing that's misconceived too, is that we as the board, we don't, we don't hire administrators. We do, we are the final say, but there's a hiring process and then a candidate is brought to us to vote yea or nay on. So that process needs to be looked at and I think we're doing that and I think that's a big part of the superintendent's search, is to get somebody in place who can do that really, really well. And we have some important decisions to make as a district in the next couple of months. We have a lot of key hires to make and we have to make sure we get those right. So that's, that's all I'll say about that.
All right. Okay. Short. Happy New Year to everybody. I already mentioned the update with superintendent. I also wanted to just let everybody know that we are working on our page in the, on our website, so the Board of Ed website. We want to update it and have some things on there, some information, a little bit more about committees, how those committees, what the duties are, what the composition of those will look like. We had a very productive retreat and then I also, thank you Lauren and Amy, we met about the website, but then about more specifically the committees and what their charges will be and how we're going to move forward. So we're working that, we're working through that. We have chairs, board chairs, and then some of them are not board committees. So it's, it's, it's exciting because we're going to hopefully, as you can say, we have two students with us tonight and that's part of our, is it Student Advisory Council? Is that, or is it Liaison? Liaisons, okay. So, and Amy, you can talk about them, but, but I wanted to just mention that we are, that is in progress and hopefully both the website and then you'll get blasts either email or through other means about how to join those committees if it's something you want to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. I will say probably the most exciting news to report is that on the morning of our retreat, right before our retreat started, we actually had a tour of Cottle School and of the capital improvements happening there. Could not be happier or more excited for this district and what this is going to mean for our students in the future. So thankful honestly to our community for approving this bond and for making this investment in our children. It is so exciting. And when we open out those doors and we do a community tour and you all can see what we saw last Sat, well, two weeks ago already, it is just so exciting. And really, the icing on the cake of all the hard work that's been put into that, but really without the support of this community and the financial investment that we are putting into our schools for our children is just so exciting. I could not, I could not have been happier. It was really the most, really in the highlight of, of my years on this board, I must say. So we will have a report on that from Russ. I'm glad you're here tonight, Russ, to report on that for us and the status of it and where we are going next after that. And that's all I have to say. For you, Ms. Goodman? Oh, you're next.
Okay. So hello, everybody. Tonight, my report will be followed by a new addition. We have added student board liaisons. Each month, students will be picked by the high school principal and they will make comments and reports at the Board of Education Business Meeting. This month, we have Jonathan Berger and Bella Touche and they will report after I finish my report. Before I get started, I just want to talk about something that happened at Cottle today because I know some parents might have heard about this. After dismissal at Cottle today, dust entered the main hallway of the building, right by the new security vestibule from outside construction. Mr. Marash evacuated just for safety reason, the task program and the P T A dance program to the Cottle Field where the kids were very happy to be. After ventilating the building, the haze dissipated and it was just some debris that like blew in. But we will be regardless doing a very thorough cleaning of Cottle tonight. Some other updates in the high school, our guidance counselors and seniors have been very busy with the college process. So the applications that went out so far, we have 59 early action applications, two, two early decision applications, and 163 regular rolling applications, which shows that our kids do apply to multiple colleges. I would like to share some of the school acceptances with you. So we have some students that got into some really competitive schools, being MIT, Duke, and Rochester Institute of Technology. We also have a lot of kids that have already gotten acceptances from state schools. And state schools are really hard to get into today because they are the best deal around. So we have kids going to SUNY Binghamton, Stony Brook, not going, accepted. They are going to make their decisions. Binghamton, Stony Brook, SUNY Albany, SUNY Maritime, Oneonta, Cortlandt, and the University of Buffalo. We also have kids who got into so many other schools, great schools, University of Alabama, American University, Arizona State, Auburn, Babson, Coastal Carolina University, Elon, Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, Fordham University, Howard University, Indiana University, University of Louisville, Marist Miami University, University of Massachusetts. Binghamton, Stony Brook, SUNY Albany, SUNY Maritime, Oneonta, Cortlandt and the University of Buffalo. We also have kids who got into so many other schools, great schools. University of Alabama, American University, Arizona State, Auburn, Babson, Coastal Carolina University, Elon, Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, Fordham University, Howard University, Indiana University, University of Louisville, Maris, Miami University, University of Massachusetts, Penn State, Providence, Rutgers, San Diego, St. John's University of Pharmacy and Allied Health, University of San Francisco and University of South Carolina, to name a few. So our kids have done really well and they've worked hard. And I want to really thank the guidance department, the students themselves, English teachers and other teachers that have helped them through this process. We also recently had an alumni panel at the high school on January 7th. And 2019 alumni, this is a regular thing that happens in Tocco, came back to talk about so far their first year of college to our seniors. And that, that's always a great thing for a school district to do and I'm really proud that Tocco does that. Our students coming back gave the students that are applying some really valuable tips and our students asked very good questions. And they really learned that college is exciting, but you also have to persevere. You know, there's all kinds of issues that come up and then, and our students were ready to handle that. And that's something that we work on in Tocco. I'd like to also give an update about athletics. First of all, at the previous Board of Education meeting during a review of the fall season, Mr. Tobin, our interim athletic director inadvertently left off two of our football players who were named all league honorable mention. So I want to give congratulations and a shout out to Christian, Christian Esposito and Stephen Anunziata. Congratulations. I would also like to add that since that report, we have three additional football players named to the All-State Team. They are Jonathan Berger, who is here tonight, first team defense, Justin Lee, second team quarterback, and Michael Myers, honorable mention running back. Jonathan Berger has also been named to the prestigious Golden Dozen Team. And also Emily Gertsen has been named to All-American Swimming. At this time, I would also like to really recognize our team captains for their leadership this past fall. For football, Jonathan Berger and Justin Lee. Drayzen Porkevich. For volleyball, Melissa Dean and Jada Rosas. For tennis, Bella Touchei, who is also here tonight. A boys soccer, John Dean and Robert Satterlee. Wait, Satriel.
Satriel.
Satriel, yes. Congratulations, Rob. And for girls soccer, Megan Lynn and Isabella Corsi. Congratulations to all our student athletes. We talked a little bit, some of the board members talked about committees and we have some committees and we are adding some new committees. I am also establishing two student councils because I think it's really important. What's school about? It's about our students. So we are having a middle school and high school student youth advisory council to provide a link between the superintendent and the students in the district for the exchange of information, ideas and concerns and generate cooperative efforts for the benefit of the students. Also being erected is the Student Athletic Council to serve as an advisory board to the director of athletics and the superintendent. These athletes will be recommended by their coaches and need to be in good standing both academically and on the team, show some leadership. And they will be talking with us in a liaison type of manner and how athletes can also add to our school and our community. I have also directed Mr. Tobin to revive the District Wellness Committee, which will be coming to fruition over the next couple of weeks. The group will develop, implement, monitor and review all necessary nutrition, social, emotional, physical activity regulations. And we will be reaching out to members of the community and of course our teachers. And in light of the upcoming budget season, I know that one of the board members suggested the advocacy committee. And I know the PTA has done some work on this. I watched a video where we were looking at foundation aid and how Tocco, foundation aid is a problem across the board. And Tocco isn't even getting what they should get. So we really need to have a committee together to influence public policy and the distribution of public resources to the benefit of our district students while remaining mindful of the impact on taxpayers. So we will be also looking for some community members who have some expertise in this area. I just want to talk a little bit because this is all secondary about Cottle School. And there's a coding program over there. Carrie Canaparo has been doing excellent work with grades two to five. Even recently, she just did an hour of code activity because it was Computer Science Week. All students begin, began with her learning about coding. And we know that that's where we're going as a school, community and as a nation. Students have ranged their learning block coding and they range blocks and patterns that outline explicitly how they would like characters to move. And to supplement this work, students in grade two to five also work offline on coding activities where they are required to write color or draw code. The activity really reinforced that coding needs to be very precise and very specific. And students are really learning about this and they're preparing for the opening of our innovation lab, which was very exciting for our students. The, Ms. Carapato also started to work with first graders this month and introduced a programming program where they are working on, working on programming robots. The robots are dash and dot. And they are learning how to have the robots move, light up and communicate. So we're very excited about bringing a very strong technology program to the elementary school while still having the programs that we have in the high school. We have new courses in digital art with Ms. Case and architecture with Mr. Pappas, utilizing apps and designing technology, a very mixed modality type of setting. We have AP Computer Science. In middle school, we have a rotating course that every kid gets to take, every, a kid gets to take in the quarter. And also, also I want to thank Kathy Moser and James Moore, who are our coaches for technology and they're available to work with teachers and with students. Finally, I would like to wish you all the best for this new year. A very happy and healthy and great 2020. I am proud to serve this community and the students in Tocco as the interim superintendent. I know that great things are ahead as we work together as a united school community. And now I would like to introduce our board liaisons. Jonathan Berger is a three-year athlete, a guitarist and top ranking student. His accomplishments were recently highlighted by receiving the prestigious Student Athlete Golden Dozen Award. He is a member of the National Honor Society Habitat for Humanity Club and he volunteers his time tutoring and teaching baseball. Jonathan will be attending MIT in the fall where he will be continuing his football career and studying business. Also, on the, on the day as tonight is Bella Touchei. She is also a very talented academic and multi-sport athlete. She excels in everything she does. She's looking forward to pursuing the discipline of physical therapy on the collegiate level. Bella has many co-curricular involvements highlighted by her being invited to play tennis for a national team and her dedicated work serving as basketball, our basketball teams manager. Presently, Bella is deciding between some very wonderful colleges and we are sure that she will pursue her educational and career goals with the zest that she has pursued high school here. So I will start with Bella and can you please give us an update on the high school?
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bella Touchei. I am a senior at Tocco High School. And me and my fellow classmate Jonathan Berger are here to update you on our senior year. We returned from summer, looking forward to a great senior year and immediately kicked off by planning homecoming led by our GO. Spirit Week was a great success as we geared up for an exciting and enthusiastic pep rally. Following the pep rally, the homecoming parade was a community event led by our homecoming king and queen. After the bonfire, we were treated to many exciting athletic events and it was a great weekend for the entire community that I think we all got into the spirit of the school year. Next, we began planning our last major fundraiser, the Haunted House. Led by our advisors, Mr. Colasano, Mr. Abrams and Ms. Iverson, we had an exciting night full of fight in front, making Halloween very special for our younger students from Cottle all the way up to our junior class. Now, a big part of our school year is O E sports. And for an update of the girls' sports, this fall season, we consisted of 14 teams participating in eight different sports throughout the season. Girls' varsity volleyball ended the season with a winning 13-5 record and won a playoff game as well. We had all league and all section honorees. Girls' varsity soccer played a number of great games this year, including a triple overtime thriller as a fourth seed in the sectional playoffs. And a very special honor was eight girls earning all league. Girls' varsity swimming had their girls with a great deal of success, including an All-American and an All-State winner. And another congratulations, Sam Lee Gertsen, who is committed to Duke to further her swimming and academic career. Girls' varsity tennis had nine students participate and a section one semifinalist as well. To kick off winter, girls' varsity basketball is now working really hard during the start of the season and we are currently on a three-game winning streak. Coming into senior year, all seniors anticipated the college application process. We were fortunate enough to work with Ms. Iverson on our college essays and the guidance department has been very, very supportive of us throughout this whole process. Our counselors have worked to the best of their ability to make this possible, make this as stress-free as possible. As Ms. Goodman said, this far in, many applications are in and some have already been received. And it has been very exciting to see many of my fellow classmates commit to some of their dream schools. Also, we had the alumni panel, which broadened our perspective and I think eased many of our tensions about being freshmen at college. Now, I'd like to turn over to Jonathan Berger, who will hopefully be on next year's panel as an alumni from MIT.
Good evening, everyone. As Bella noted, we've had a very exciting first semester as Tocco seniors and we're looking forward to finishing the year and having as much fun as possible. So now I'd like to update you on the boys' athletics. So during the fall season, varsity football went nine and two and made it all the way to the New York State semifinal championship. We've had a number of players selected for all league and all section as well as some All-State members. As Ms. Goodman said earlier, Justin Lee was named second team All-State. Michael Myers was honorable mention and I was fortunate enough to receive first team honors. The boys' varsity soccer team had a successful season and finished six, seven and three. However, a number of losses were, came in very close games and they played a heartbreaker with a two-one overtime loss in the first round of the playoffs. They also had a number of players honored in the postseason as all league and all section. Boys' varsity basketball is currently five and four and is having a very successful season. Tomorrow, they played the number one team ranked in the state, Alexander Hamilton. Boys' varsity bowling is off to a five and one start for the year and is very excited to continue in their winning ways. The Pioneer League student athletes are also playing really hard and are participating in a variety of sports as well. Student athletes who are committed and are heading out of town next fall thus far are Justin Lee, who is continuing baseball and academics at Maritime, and Evan Rivera, who is playing at Missouri Cordia. He's playing football. In addition, a very special event was held last Tuesday evening where a number of Tocco students, parents, staff and athletes were able to hear Chris Heron tell his life story. Upcoming future happenings that are included are midterms next week. For seniors, it's a chance for us to continue our academic success and to improve our transcripts. Teachers have already begun to hand out review material and are also available for extra help this week and next week if we need any extra, any extra guidance for midterms. We've also started the process for our spring internships with Mr. Colasano. The internship program is an opportunity for us to possibly find out what we want to do in the future. Seniors have already applied for positions and are in the midst of finding out where they will be placed. For me, as a student who is interested in a career in business and finance, I've requested an internship that would allow me for myself to explore this world and find out if it was a career that I want to pursue. Hopefully for me and for our southern seniors, it would help us create an idea if what we want to study is what we want to do in the future and if it's the job that we want to create for ourselves. Lastly, we would like to say a big thanks to our teachers, administrators and school board for the great support received here at Tocco High School.
That's great. Thank you.
Great job. Okay. Where are we at?
The jury.
A jury. Let's just end with that.
It's a good place.
Let's end on a high note. Comments from Assistant Superintendent of Business, Lee?
I'll just hold off because I have more further down on the list and I can do that all together.
Very good. Comments from the PTA?
Good evening, everyone. Tara Zeggers, President of the Tocco PTA. Congratulations to all of our student athletes for all of your accomplishments on and off the field. It's really great to hear about them. And Jonathan mentioned our Chris Heron event, which was put together by the Tocco PTA with the support of the Community Fund, together with both the Bronxville and East Chester PTAs and Stronger Together, which is a new coalition that is here between the three communities that is focusing on drug and alcohol awareness and prevention. I have to say that I was blown away by the presentation and that we had over 500 people attend. It was a sold house. You could have, I saw Laura there, you could have heard a pin drop during the presentation and it was very impactful. So we are really hoping that we can do events like this in the future again because it was very successful in partnering with our communities. Otherwise, here in Tocco, we have started our winter session of Curious of On Hudson down at Cottle School this week, which is our after-school STEAM enrichment programs. And that's going strong. It's a sellout crowd every single time. On January 15th, coming up, our Student Support Committee will be doing a presentation right here in the library at 7:30 for parents about participating in your child's annual review. Annual review season is coming up soon. We also just recently opened up registration for our Building Bridges Program, which is coming back in its sixth year, the week of February 24th. Some information went out for that, for volunteers to start signing up for that. I'm really excited because I think this is the year that our fifth graders, we're actually our first kindergarten class to have participated in building bridges. So it's really nice to see it go all the way through all grades. Save the date. We have our PTA fundraisers going out right now. We have Handbag Bingo coming up on February 13th. So there'll be some details about that coming up soon. If you'd like to go see the Yankees and support the PTA at the same time, get your ticket orders in soon. Those are due by January 31st and that game is on April 19th. It's a pretty good deal and a portion of the proceeds goes back to the PTA as well. That's all I have tonight. Thank you so much. I do also want to thank you for all the information that you provided earlier at the beginning of the meeting. I thought that was terrific. And two things you mentioned, Ms. Goodman, about the committees. You know, Chris Heron talked a lot about wellness and I think that it's great that there'll be a wellness committee. His, his presentation really showed the importance of teaching our students about wellness within our schools. And you also mentioned the advocacy committee, which I, as you saw the video, I think is extremely important. And if there's anything that I can do to help you with that initiative, let me know because I've been in touch with everybody around you on that, as you saw. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything, Tara. Okay, Tocco School Foundation. Is anyone here to report on Tocco School Foundation? Okay. We're going to go on now to our presentations. Superintendent Search update. We have Mr. Jim Grotto here.
So I'm going to use the board behind you.
All right, again, my name is James Grotto. I'm the Assistant Superintendent at Southern West District of Boise. Here to talk to you about your board's decision and the process of the superintendent search. So we'll take it back to where we started, give you a little update about where we are right now and let you know where we're headed. So superintendent searches are done by Boise throughout the state. It's a service that every Boise offers you, every component district, free of charge. Not every district takes advantage of it. Some do, some don't. Your board has decided to take advantage of the Boise service that, that we provide. So it's operated by Dr. Coles, the district superintendent, myself and Valerie Tramelli, who's our district clerk. This is an open process. Some districts choose to do a closed process, meaning that the board is the only body that would see the applicants. Your board has chosen to do an open process. Your board has chosen to do an open process, so community members will be involved, as you will see as we talk about the process. So, the Tocco Board of Education contacted Dr. Coles once they realized there was going to be a superintendent vacancy. They met with Dr. Coles on November 4th, 2019. And as you heard earlier, they may have interviewed other superintendent for search firms. I don't know that answer, but they chose to go with BOCES. A superintendent stakeholder survey was posted on your district's website from November 25th to December 11th. As we heard already, we've got quite a few responses to that. And on December 10th, Dr. Coles and Valerie Tramelli conducted stakeholder input meetings in the district. They met during that full day in the district with administrators, teachers, students, and non-instructional staff. In those meetings, they were asked a series of questions. All the notes were taken by Valerie Tramelli. Every single response was, was recorded, and all of that information was shared with the Board of Education. Community stakeholder input meetings occurred on December 13th and also on January 9th, 2020. That's in the past. So, again, feedback from all stakeholders was compiled and presented to the board on December 18th, 2019. So, everything from the full day in the district, as well as the one community event that had happened in the evening, everything was compiled, including all the survey results, and shared with the board on December 18th. The question is, what did the board do with that stakeholder feedback? So, they considered all of the feedback as they created the job posting. They read through every word that was given to them as they created the position posting. In other words, what does everybody feel is needed in the new superintendent? So, the new posting was created, and as you've heard already, it is posted. It's live right now. What's happening now? So, this was up to, up to now. What's happening right now? The position was posted on December 20th, the closing date of January 30th, 31st, 2020. So, it's live right now. It's posted in the following places, and there are a lot of them. So, New York State Council of School Superintendents. That's where most superintendent candidates would go. It's also posted in New York State School Boards Association. It's posted with all district superintendents, district superintendent means BOCES superintendent around the state. So, every single BOCES superintendent has received a copy of the posting to distribute within their component districts. Association of Educational Service Agencies, Association of American, Association of School District Administrators, Education Week, Southern Westchester BOCES website, Tocco Union Free School District website, OLOS, which is the, it's the website that all educators use in this region, part of Northern Westchester BOCES operates it. But if you were looking for a teaching job, teaching assistant, any type of school-related position, you would go to the OLOS website. It's also there. New York State Institutions of Higher Education that have school district leader programs. For example, University of Albany, Buffalo, St. John's, any, any higher, higher ed institution that we know of that has school district leader certification programs, New Paltz, any of them, we sent it directly to their placement office. So, that's what's happening now. What's coming next? Next, applications will be screened by Southern Westchester BOCES. That's our role. And any candidates who match the profile that's identified, so anybody who matches up to the qualifications that are listed on that job posting, we will invite them to participate in a round-one interview. That's a standard practice. That's with Dr. Coles and with me. And we have a standard set of questions that we will ask them. Then we'll tailor those questions to your district based on what you've got in your profile that you're looking for. We interview anybody that qualifies. Those that don't qualify, obviously, we don't interview them. And there will be a lot. There will be a lot of applicants for a position like this. And some won't be certified, some won't have the qualifications that you're looking for in this particular district. We will filter them out. But that doesn't mean that your board won't see those applications. Round-one interviews will occur, that's with us, between February 3rd and 13th, 2020. And the interviews are about one-hour interviews, and they come, and they meet with us, go through a series of questions. But after we're done with that, the board receives all information submitted by each candidate, even the ones who aren't, who aren't qualified. The board still gets to see them, review all that paperwork if they choose to. So, they'll have, they'll have eyes on every single thing. It's a tremendous commitment for the board to, to go through this and to do the thorough job that needs to be done, and they will do because they want the best candidate for your district. So, they get to see everything, as well as the responses. So, we take notes for every single, every single thing they say, we write down and type it up and put it in front of the board members. So, the board members can read. If they, if they look through and they say, hey, here's a candidate that I want to learn a little bit more about, they can look and see what that person answered, and then they can go through the resume. They can, they can find all the information that they need. Dates to be determined as to when we will get to the board with that, but it will be within the timeline. And Dr. Coles will recommend candidates. So, let's say we get 15. Let's say we interview 15 candidates. Maybe we're going to get, let's say, 50 applicants. Do you mind? Out of those, let's say, out of the 50, 15 meet the requirements, we will sit with the 15, and we will write down every single answer and bring it, we'll bring it. But out of the 15, we will recommend, hey, here, out of these 15, here's the six, or seven, or eight, or nine that we think you really want to look at closely. You, meaning the Board of Education, not you, the community. You, the Board of Education. We will recommend, let's say, eight out of the 15. They then spend some time going through everything, deciding, do they want to bring in those eight people? Do they want to have a look at the others, the other seven that we didn't recommend? So, there's a big time commitment there when they go through and have a look at what people wrote, because there's a right example on the application, two questions. So, they will, the board members will have this person's notes that we will take, but they will also have their written statements to questions related to your district. And if you want to see the questions, you can, you can go online and look at the application. It's on your website. It's on our website. So, we recommend candidates, but the board decides who they would like to interview. So, they may pick six candidates, they may pick eight, they may pick seven, they may pick 10. But we will have already done preliminary reference checks. So, if there, if there are things that are red flags, we will already know that. After all that, in late February and early March, the board will conduct round-two interviews of the candidates that they select. Two or three finalists will be selected to participate in round-three interviews. So, round one is Dr. Coles and me. Round two is just the board and Dr. Coles and/or me sitting in on those. After that, they decide who want to bring back two or three people for a full day in the district. That's round three. So, what will it look like? During round-three interviews, the finalists will spend a full day in the district, meeting with constituency groups. So, if there's three finalists, that's three full days. The constituency groups will be the teachers, the administrators, the CSCA, and, and community members. And the union leadership will likely be asked to identify the people who they want to have on the committee. So, the teachers' union, the administrator's CSCA, the parents, five people recommended by the PTA, and five identified through a lottery draw to be conducted by the district clerk. So, there will be a lottery. So, the PTA should, should have the right to send five people that they want to send, however they choose to pick them. But it should be open to people who are not necessarily part of the PTA. So, there'll be a lottery draw that will be publicized in late February on your website to let people throw their name in the hat if they want to be selected. Final interviews will, finalists will be, also, they're going to have one with the students that day. Students could not be forgotten. So, let's say there's three candidates, three different days, March 9th, 10th, and 12th. Those are the dates that are already scheduled. So, if, it's a lot to schedule. It's a lot of people's time out of their, their daily work, but it's important. I'm sorry. It's an odd, it's odd, because usually you're speaking to the board, but I'm speaking to you. So, I'll, I'll try to project.
For the people at home.
For the people at home? Oh, for the people at home. People at home. Oh, sorry, to the people at home. All right. Candidates will also have a final interview with the board that night. The board's not going to make this decision having only seen these people one or two times. They're going to really spend some time with them. So, after a full day, if you picture yourself as the candidate, one of the three finalists, you've got time with the teachers, time with the administrators, time with the CSCA, time with the community, time with the students, and a tour of the district. And then, when it's all over, you're going to have a seat with the board and have an interview again. Here's an important note, though. The role of the constituency group, all of the constituency groups, teachers and everyone else, the role of the constituency groups is to meet with the candidates and provide feedback on their replies to the questions and share responses with the Board of Education for their consideration as they make the decision on the final candidate. So, constituency groups don't recommend. They provide feedback to the board, and we have a form that everybody will use. So, they will provide feedback to the board. The board will, again, read all that feedback, but it's the board's responsibility to make the decision. That's the one person in the district that they supervise. It's their role to make the recommendation and to decide who the person would be. But they need all of the feedback from all the constituency groups to help them make their decision. And then, once the final candidate is identified, targeted date for the board appointment is May 4th, and the start date, July 1st, 2020. During this time, between the final interview and the decision, of course, the contract gets negotiated, thorough background check, criminal background check, all that would, would occur before an offer is made. And that's the process. Positions offered, complete background check, contract, oops, here we go. Are we opening this to questions?
Can you?
Questions? Are we opening it to questions?
Should we?
It's up to you.
Of course.
Anybody have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Grotto on the process that he just forward?
Just a little bit.
I'm sorry, you have to come to the microphone.
Pretty much knows me. Lori Gerald, I was wondering, I may miss the whole timeline. Are we, I know you said the constituency groups are formed, what, February? Did I understand you? And then, how long before the entire process is done and a person is selected?
So, the, the round-three interviews, March 10th, 11th, and 12th. And after that, the, the board wants to make their recommendation by May 4th. I'm sorry.
And the young lady serving as our interim, is she part of the candidate pool? Or could she be part of the candidate pool if she so desires?
That's it.
So, anyone is welcome to apply.
Thank you, Lori. Okay, anybody else? Okay. Thank you so much, Jen, for, for the presentation and for going over that, for your time tonight and explaining the process to our community.
No, and one of the things that BOCES did for us, or did for the posting, in addition to the actual posting, is they created a flyer that sort of advertised the position, which was, we had a lot of input on. They drafted it, and we kind of went back and forth, and it sort of is the nice, kind of looking way that we are putting forth this position. I wonder if we could put that up on the web? You did, it's on there. Okay, go, great. So, yeah, so that's really good. So, if you want to take a look at that, that's a real quick snapshot of, of sort of what we put out there to candidates as an ad for, for the position. So, I recommend you check that out.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next, we are going to have a budget calendar review by Ms. Gordon.
So, Lauren just passed around is our preliminary budget development calendar, and I just wanted to give you a quick update as to where we stand with the budget process so far. In December and January, the administration met with each other to discuss the current year budget, as well as initial discussions for program and staffing needs for 2020, 2021. We're continuing those discussions throughout the month of January. We are also curtailing purchasing at this time. At this point in time, most needs for the district really should have been ordered at this point. We always continue to order things on, for health and safety, for textbooks, for graduation, but most of the classroom supplies and contracts should be put into place at this time. Any request for future things that might be needed, we're taking those requests, and then we ask that the district curtail their purchasing unless there's an immediate or unforeseen need. That way, we can project what our budget will look like as best we can for the end of the year and be able to project where we will stand for next year. So, that's in process right now. The buildings are continuing to just evaluate whether there's anything else they need to order before the end of this week. We are also meeting with the Finance Audit Budget Advisory Committee on Wednesday. Those are community members, as well as board members and business office members, and we'll discuss some of the preliminary information that we're starting to receive regarding the constraints and the ability to project our revenues for next year that the state starts to give us. The governor's recommendations will come out, I believe, tomorrow. They're releasing these executive state aid proposal. We've already started to get some idea of what the current CPI will look like, which influences our tax cap limitations. It's a little below 2% this year. So, we'll see if there's anything new that comes our way in January, but it looks like it's around 1.8%. It will be the CPI tax cap. We'll have more information on that later this month. And then, we'll start looking at a year-end fund balance projection when we start to get all our numbers together. The rest of the year, it's just, the rest of the couple of months is laid out in front of you as to some dates that are required by the state, as well as things that we do with our committees around the district to put the budget into place. And we'll be providing you with more information as we go forward.
Thank you, Lee. Does anyone have any questions for Lee? Laura?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, we now have a capital project update from Russ Davidson.
Using this, Russ? No?
No. Old school tonight.
Old school.
Just paper. So, hi, Russ Davidson, KJND. So glad, Michelle, you liked what you saw.
Oh, I love it. Thank you.
I've been there three times in the last month myself. I tend to drop in as I'm passing through, and it's really, it's really fantastic to finally see it. And I would, I would share, it's just great collaborating with the community that supports their schools. It's, you know, it's, for us architects who do it all the time, sometimes we forget why, and then you walk through and something's coming around like that, and you go, ah, that's why we do this. But it's going to really change your school, and the contractor is getting there. I think that, you know, everyone's aware of the hiccups. It was really unfortunate that there was an oil tank buried under the new security vestibule that no one seemed to be able to notice. But it's gone now, and your budget's tight, but it looks all doable. And, you know, it's very exciting to see the glass in the security vestibule when you came in here today. I think that's going to be, you know, really an elegant and safe solution. So, you'll have a really safe front entrance to your school, but without detracting from the historic quality of the building. So, I think very successful from our point of view, and I'm glad you feel the same. It will finish. I know it's, the last, the last 10% seems to take 50% of the time, but it will finish, and we're paying a lot of attention to it pretty much every day with my colleague Joe Riley, who's here. We're, we're looking at change orders. Your funding is tight. I will give you a more thorough update once some of these pending change orders clear up. But I was also asked if now's a good time to share with you some of our original aspirations and thoughts on the Cottle Field.
Yes.
And Russ, before you do that, though, do you have an idea of what the completion date will be for the, for the project on the second floor? Do you, at this point now, do you have a projection?
I think it's late March.
Late March?
Yeah.
Is that included in the vestibule?
There is, you know, we have not been helped out by Con Edison, which I would say is only typical when Con Edison's involved. only typical when Con Edison's involved. And the, but the elevator delivery has been delayed until the electric service is there. So we have a chain of events. Without an elevator, we can't complete the shaft. Without the shaft, we can't complete the stair. So that, the delayed electric service has really hurt that sort of end that you saw that looked pretty unfinished, because they can't work on that area until they get the elevator in there. So that's nothing really about the contractor at all. It's about Con Edison being overburdened and being pulled for various emergencies, including one this week. They didn't show up because they had to deal with some emergency. So we keep pushing, and everybody's applying the right kind of pressure, and we do the best we can.
So late March is your best guess at this point? And that's for the second floor and the vestibule?
No, that's for the second floor.
What about the vestibule?
The vestibule works moving well. There was a little dust problem today, as was mentioned, and, you know, there's going to be a dust control plan put in place, and apparently there was some hole in the wall that he didn't know about when he was cutting concrete. But thankfully, it was off hours, nobody was hurt, no real, I mean, everybody was very cautious, and I think that's good. But that shouldn't have happened as well.
Do you have an idea of when the vestibule will be done?
I think it's really closer to the June timeframe. But it's just got a lot of little, you know, it's a building. It's a very small building, but it's still got every step that it takes to build a building. Foundation, steel, windows, painting, doors, hardware, wiring. But, you know, I think it's going to be a big improvement to security of Cottle, and I think you can already see that it sort of fits in. I walked by the other day, and the principal says, you hardly even notice it's there. It's like it's always been that way. So you can have a nice ramp up and a nice stair up. It does squeeze the sidewalk a little bit, but there's still plenty of room, and we've got the new sidewalks and nice granite curbstones in, so there's plenty of room to, plenty of room to get by it. So I brought a little hand out. If you take one and pass it along. But one of the things that is a new piece of information is, I would say, at long last, you have control of Siwanoy Boulevard. And this has been under discussion for a long time. So, and this room's a little challenging, so I'll try and turn both ways. But this is a site plan. So this is Siwanoy Boulevard here, and this is the Cottle Elementary School in gray, and this is your new security vestibule. And as you'll remember, the looking at the multipurpose field here, from the pre-bond process from several years ago, there was a whole variety of options that were explored. And the one that made it into your second bond referendum really was a downsizing or a compromise of, let's just fix up the grass field. And at that time, you did not have control of Siwanoy Boulevard, and it wasn't clear if you were going to have that. And I'm so thrilled to hear that your sports teams did well, because we got you a new synthetic turf field just in time for that. So that plays right into this theme, which, this is just aspirational. What would be the best possible thing to do to the Cottle Field? And this is just for discussion, it's not a firm proposal, we don't have detailed budgets on it. But we know that you are very, very short on playfield space here at Tuckahoe Schools, that you really have the one field. And our experience with grass fields that are super heavily used is they do not last. They turn into mud. And this needs to be a playground in the day, and you need practice space. So what we're showing here is taking the entire field, making it even more flat, and putting synthetic turf on it. You get a half football field, okay? You get a half of a full-size soccer field, and you get a full-size softball field that can happen on that whole field. Just another idea was to put sort of a little, maybe a rubber-surfaced walking track around the perimeter, which is this area in gray. You know, we always find that even if you don't do that, people will walk around the edge of a field, and it's a good thing for jogging or loosening up, and especially if you have a team practicing. You can have people doing laps while people practice. And the real advantage of those types of surfaces is they get used about three times more than grass, because you can be on them when they're wet, just like you can out here. It can rain, and an hour or two later, you can actually be playing. Whereas grass, you can be off of it for days. Or if you're on it, you just made it into mud and ruined it for the season. The other option to take care of that was to take the play area and move it up to what's called the rock lot, which is where the construction trailers are now. And the other thought was, and I hear you're considering Bollards, is to take this portion of Siwanoy Boulevard and really completely rethink it. Perhaps it's even a one-way drive that sort of meanders, and you plant some grass on the school side. We'll still put some sort of pavers, so we maintain the 20-foot-wide emergency firefighting access that you must have there. But we could put colored asphalt right outside the cafeteria, and really hard gates here and here, so during the school day, this area is actually playground and allows the young children to safely pass between the building and the field without any worry about traffic at all. And we think it would really change the neighborhood, and it would give you this multipurpose field, which would be used a lot by the middle school and high school. And of course, during the day, the portion of Siwanoy and the field used by your youngest students. So we think this is worth a discussion. You know, you did set that money aside in the first bond, but now that you have Siwanoy Boulevard, we would just recommend that you take a breath and rethink how the whole thing goes together in a longer term. And the thing that we handed out was basically just a quick review of where you are. You know, I thought that the time, it's gone pretty fast, but it was fall 2016, so almost, well, three and a half years ago, we first started working together, and then you came up with votes in, you know, December 2017 and April 2018. But that April 2018 vote actually was significantly scaled down. You remember that we talked about doing that, so you could get the most important part done? And I would remind you that I went back and I looked at the original completion date for Cottle before we did the expedited revote. It was September 2020. So even though it's not as good as we had hoped, you're actually getting the Cottle addition before we thought, back in 2017. So it has happened pretty quickly. But there was a lot of things that were discussed that you may want to discuss in conjunction with doing something different with the field, and we've made a list of them here. You know, some of them may end up getting taken care of in an energy performance contract, which is still being discussed, and we're trying to work with that vendor to your benefit. But a lot of them included, you know, the renovation of the space that we're in, the renovation of the cafeteria below, the main office, security upgrades. And then at, down at Cottle, it was also the renovation expansion of the gym, which was discussed. I just think that after a successful bond referendum, we'd always discuss the possibility of revisiting some of these things. And I think that when you talk about re-establishing a facilities committee, that would be a great way to really work together, to decide what the priorities are, and, you know, what do you really want to do with the Cottle Field? And of course, you can't do everything, and you've learned a lot about your community through these two votes. But you also, you know, did hear from some community members that you should have maybe tried for a little bit more, and we would be, we would be really excited to continue and facilitate a community process that looks at these remaining items, the Cottle Field, Siwanoy Boulevard, and help you prioritize a proposal to continue to improve your facilities.
Great. So can I just ask you a question in terms of timing from, you know, to get, you know, when is the most realistic amount of time you would need to put something forward? If, let's just say we were just talking about the field right now, without adding in anything else. Not that that's not a possibility, but I'm just...
Well, the field is, you know, our work is pretty simple. I'm really more concerned about getting the feedback and having the community have a voice, because we can work very quickly. We could have you a budget on this and probably two other options in two weeks. Are you ready to decide which one to do? No, it needs to be socialized with the community.
Exactly.
And I think that if you were talking about a modest proposal that was field-focused and one or two other things, you may be able to get there by May and put it up with your budget.
With the budget, that's what I'm...
That's possible. If it becomes a little bit more ambitious, or you find that people aren't feeling like they had voice, then you extend that to the fall, which is generally the most popular time to put up facilities votes in that sort of October timeframe and separate it from your budget.
Okay. Any questions for us?
Definitely is good food for thought, and I appreciate you bringing this forward, because one of the things I'm thinking is that, you know, some of the bigger ticket items on here that you listed, renovation, expansion of the gymnasium, library, cafeteria, you wouldn't want to do that type of work after you did this work, right? Because, you know, that type of heavy work...
Yeah, you would want to coordinate a lot of that.
Right.
The gymnasium would be a little easier than the...
Because you can do it from the other side.
Right. And you remember, we were going to bump out the cafeteria. I really think, you know, the cafeteria at Cottle is the former gym, and it's pretty much windowless. And one of the things that I think you'll find after you open the new Cottle addition is people are going to walk into some of those other spaces and go...
Where are the windows?
Oh, what's happened here? So we ought to probably revisit some of those things, and I think that that could be a great tie-in to that place based on Siwanoy, because generally, the path of an elementary school day is lunch recess. And you can make a really nice connection there. But yeah, it would have to be coordinated, and I would suggest that if you're going to go ask for funding, that you take the right amount of time to do a thoughtful process so that the community supports what you're going to put up.
As far as synthetic material for the field, in your experience, when you're dealing with elementary school level, do you use the same type of material that you would use that we did, you know, this past summer?
Yeah, there's books written, there's books written on infill, and we've been to many of the debates, and I would say generally, yes. First of all, a lot of the synthetic playground surfaces for elementary schools are made of exactly the same material that's in your field area.
Right, right.
So if it's healthy for a ninth grader, it's healthy for a first grader. There are other options, and some of them are fine. You know, we put pads under the field that take care of a lot of resiliency, and then just use plain sand as an infill. And you can get very good performance out of that system. It's a little more expensive, but that way, there's no crumb rubber free, which is really what people object to. And it does pick up a static charge, and you probably bring home lots of it at night, and your parents hate it. But it's a really, it's been proven safe by every health department at the state and federal level. But there are other options. We're not generally a huge fan of some of the organic infills and have not seen very good success with them in terms of maintaining their resiliency, and they basically biodegrade, and then you have to weed your synthetic turf field, so...
Is there a local school here that has used the sand?
I'm sure we can find you one. Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. Great. Lots to think about. Thank you so much.
Yeah, it's good. I like the idea of the, I like the way, the suggestion of how to use the road.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it could be very innovative, and, you know, you have a tight village, and you need every square foot you can get.
Yeah.
It would be really good.
That's neat. I like that.
Thank you so much, Russ. Okay. All right. Where are we?
Just one comment about the progress of the work, too. It's kind of common sense now, I think, but I think it was mentioned too to the last meeting, you know, with the, with the issue with the noise earlier on in the project, where we had to switch a lot of the work to the nighttime work. Just so people are aware, a lot of that work now is back to daytime, because now we're at the finishing stages, so it's all quiet work. So I know some people have made comments that they're not seeing any work happening at night, or not a lot of work happening at night, but that's to be expected, because most of the remaining work now has shifted back to daytime work, so I just wanted to make that, that point of clarification.
Okay. Okay. We are going to now move on to first recognition of the audience, and this is on agenda items. Do you have anyone signed up for... Nobody? Okay. We are going to now move on to the consent agenda. Motion to approve consent agenda items two through six. Is there a motion, Pete? Second. Laura, discussion? All in favor? Teres? Okay. Move on to business of the board. First reading of policy. This is procedural for, first reading for new policy 5605, voter preregistration. Lauren, did you want to let us know what that's about?
Sure. In accordance with changes to election law, school districts are now required to adopt a policy regarding preregistration of students aged 16 and/or 17. So this specific policy language comes from this, but it has been vetted by our attorneys.
Okay. So that is going to be posted on our website, the new language. Anyone who wants to comment on that and get back to us, we will see that again at our next meeting for a second reading. Number two, adopt amended policy. Resolve to adopt amended policy 5420, student health services. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Laura, discussion? All in favor? Number three, authorization for additional funds for boiler replacement project. Maybe one of the students read that. Whereas on March 18th, 2019, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District determined that the cost replaced the failed boiler of the hot water heating system of the Tuckahoe Middle School and High School constituted ordinary contingent expenses because the boiler replacement was necessary to preserve the school's district's property and assure the health and safety of its students and staff. And whereas on March 18th, 2019, the Board of Education also authorized and directed the Assistant Superintendent for Business to advertise for bids for the equipment and public work necessary to replace the boiler in Tuckahoe Middle School, High School, and authorize the expenditure of funds from the unassigned fund balance to replace the failed boiler, an amount to be determined by the contract awarded after receipt of bids. And whereas on April 8th, 2019, the Board of Education authorized a proposal from KGND Architects PC dated March 15th, 2019, and revised April 5th, 2019, to provide architectural services for the replacement of the failed boiler in the Tuckahoe Middle School, High School, up to a sum not to exceed $29,500. And whereas on October 21st, 2019, the Board of Education authorized additional $10,750 for the architectural services provided by KGND Architects for the replacement of failed boiler in Tuckahoe Middle School, High School. And whereas on July 18th, 2019, the Board of Education awarded a contract to Southeast Mechanical Corporation in the amount of $327,000 for replacement of the Tuckahoe Middle School, High School boiler. And whereas additional expenses were incurred to complete the replacement of the Tuckahoe Middle School, High School boiler, including but not limited to making modifications to the installment of the replacement boiler that were required by the New York State Department, Education Department, the additional architectural services related to the construction administration contractor closeout and submission of SED paperwork. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby determines that the additional cost to repair and/or replace the failed boiler of the hot water heating system of the Tuckahoe Middle School, High School constitute ordinary contingent expenses because the boiler replacement was necessary to preserve the school district's property and assure the health and safety of its students and staff. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the payment of the architectural fees approved on April 8th, 2019, and October 21st, 2019, for the replacement of the failed boiler in the Tuckahoe Middle School, High School from the unassigned fund balance. And be it further resolved... And be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the expenditure of additional funds not to exceed $17,288 from unassigned, unassigned fund balance for the additional expenses required to complete the replacement of the failed boiler in the Tuckahoe Middle School, High School, which expenses include but are not limited to making modifications to the installment and the replacement boiler that required by the New York State Education Department, and additional architectural services related to the construction administration contractor closeout and submission of SED paperwork. And be it further resolved that the Superintendent of Schools and Assistant Superintendent of Business are hereby authorized to empower to individually take all actions necessary to implement the purposes of this resolution. And be it further resolved that any and all actions heretofore taken by any school district employees and officials in furtherance of this resolution are ratified and confirmed. Is there a motion? Teres, second. Pete, discussion?
So in a nutshell, basically what we are doing is asking the board to approve a resolution that would allow us to use the remaining funds of about $17,288 and pay for those out of the unallocated reserves. So we had already authorized the entire project to be paid for out of unallocated reserves. There were the additional $10,000 and change for the KGND additional work that you've already approved, as well as $6,538 for a change order that was required by SED for a strobe light and a fire alarm pull in the boiler room, and this resolution will allow us to pay for it that way.
Okay. All in favor? And it is now, has been installed and...
Operational.
Wonderful. Okay. Number four, approve a MOA, resolve to approve a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Defense, Defense Logistics Agency through disposition services, computers for learning office, to set forth the terms and conditions which will be binding on the parties with respect to access DOD property and authorize the Superintendent of Schools to execute such. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Laura, discussion? Lee, can you just let us know what that is?
I think that's Ellen.
That's actually me.
Dr. McDonaldkin.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, we, the Department of Defense has an Office of Learning that they offer to many entities, including public school districts, their excess technology. So whether it's tablets, whether it's laptops, whatever, whatever technology that the Department of Defense has decided they are done with, they allow organizations such as school districts the option to receive them at no cost. So in order for us to even see the list of items and to determine what might fit into our infrastructure or enhance our infrastructure, we need you to enter into the agreement that has been vetted by our attorneys, so that we can see the list, and then our technology committee will look at it together and decide what makes sense that's out there that might actually help us keep our costs down and, and repair, and I should say, replace some of our items if there's anything that works. We won't know until we see the list.
Sounds good. All in favor? We have a motion. Move on to personnel, accept personnel recommendations. Resolve to accept personnel action items A through D as outlined below. Is there a motion? Laura, second. Pete, discussion?
I want...
Go ahead.
...to move to table, the appointment of the varsity baseball coach, so we can get some more information...
Okay.
...that we asked for.
Okay. Okay, so pending additional information on the appointment. Lauren, can you amend the motion?
So we're going to do a motion to table the appointment pending additional information. So we need a first and a second on that.
Okay. Second, first to table. Pete, second. Teres, discussion?
Just additional information that we requested.
All in favor? Okay. Motion to, we already have a motion to, so now we need to vote on the remainder?
So A through D as amended.
A through D as amended. All in favor? Oh wait, do we have to motion that way? I'm sorry, Lauren.
Right, so you're good to accept...
Motion, A through D as amended. Motion, Pete, second. Laura, discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Lauren. Okay, and we are now moving on to the second recognition of the audience. Allison Halloran.
Allison Halloran, 115 Middleton Place. My comments are just about the workshop, actually, that was on January 6th. I had watched it from home, and it's, just to clarify, I am not saying anything against the teachers, or the administration, or the school. It's more the way the data was presented that I found a little disappointing. When I first looked at the graphs that were shown for the high school, I was like, wow, look at us, you know, we do fantastic. And then I realized that we were talking about, that was the percentage of children who passed at 65 or higher. And my thoughts turned to, well, thank goodness, because I actually expect 100% to pass. And I was a little disappointed that we weren't 100%, and that at times, we're far below 100% of passing. And I was also disappointed in that when we spoke about the children who received mastery, we just kind of lumped them into, and 40% received mastery across the board. Like, we didn't, it would have been nice to see that we had, I mean, ideally, what I would like to see is 98% passing on their first try. Also, that, that information was, you know, it was the first try and the retakes in the summer, which certainly, between the first and the retakes in the summer, I kind of expect like 99% passing. And when, you know, ideally, it would be nice to see 98% passing on the first time, and 50% or more achieving mastery, and actually showing how many in each regions got mastery, because we do have a lot of kids who get that, and we just kind of like brush it under the rug. And that's, it's, it's hard to do, to get mastery, and the kids should be, you know, recognized for their effort. And by looping it together, the way that we did, it kind of made me think, well, we must not have anything to be proud of, but, because we just kind of lumped it in there, like it was nothing important. I do appreciate the thoughtfulness of the board members' questions that were asked. However, I would like to know if there is any follow-up to those questions? Do we ever analyze the presentations after you've heard them to see what we could have done better? Do we look to see where we can help our students achieve their personal best? I know that not every student is a student, and I actually celebrate that, but where are we really doing everything we can to make sure that every child is reaching their personal best? And I don't think we are. I think that we're lacking, and I think that it is not the fault of the teachers. I just think collectively, the way that we approach how children can do their best, somewhere we are falling short. I do hope that our next superintendent has an action plan and that we, and has solutions to this problem. Another thing that I reckon, that I noticed during the presentation, and I noticed this, for years and with every presentation, whenever we're talking about test scores for any of our schools, the first comment, and the first comment that night was, remember that we have 20-something, we always, you know, 23, 28, 20, 20-something percent economically disadvantaged student body? It's like the first thing that's brought up, and what does that even mean? Why are we using that as our excuse? Are we using it as excuse? Because that's kind of the, like, what's implied. What does it even mean? Because, just because you, I'm at three minutes? Well, I'm going to keep going, sorry. Because, just because you're economically disadvantaged does not mean that you are not smart. It's, it's really a crutch that we use, and it's got to stop, because I know many people who are not in the economically disadvantaged state, who have a lot of struggle with education, and I know many who are economically disadvantaged, who are actually really, really bright. And when you say things like that, you're really saying that it's their fault that our scores are what they are, and that is so not the case, and so not fair to those students. We use the phrase preparing every student for excellence, and I would like to see that that phrase put to action more. We need to start raising our standards here. And time after time, people say, how do you showcase the high school? That presentation was not showcasing our high school. We always lose so many ninth graders, they always say. The answer to this question always is a deflection, and the answer is always, oh, but so many students come back. And I'm going to tell you that as a parent of a student who came back, who left and came back to this high school, we came back because my child wasn't happy. I came back because he wanted to be with his friends. I came back because my kid can be anything here at Tuckahoe, and I came back because he had teachers who really cared for him. But one thing that those private schools, and I believe most great public schools do over Tuckahoe, is that they celebrate their academic achievements, they boast about them nonstop, and we need to make that our practice here. It's not that we don't have high achievements here, we do. We just don't boast about it enough.
Thank you, Allison.
Sorry for going over.
It's okay, Allison. Amy Connolly?
Hi, Amy Connolly, 112 Siwanoye Boulevard. Thank you for the update on the superintendent search, very much appreciated. I would like to ask, I know that there are other open positions. I don't, I'm not going to say what I think they all are, because I don't know if they are all actually open, but we talked about, you, Pete, referenced a lot of turnover. I think communicating to the community about all of those positions and the status of those searches is very important as we move forward here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to comment on that at all? On the searches?
Yes, I will. I think that the, the main ones is we do have Ms. Lewis retiring, that's a very big, big shoes to fill. And we also have the athletic director, as far as administrators, which is our hard posi, believe it or not, a very hard position to also fill. Those are, they have been posted, and we do have resumes that we will look at for them, and we might have to go at it again if we do, and also the Director of Special Education, again. And those are three very key positions. We have teaching positions open, we have people who are great teachers who are retiring that we are looking for, for those teachers also. So we do have postings up on the various websites. The Bosse's administrator did talk about OLS, where most people who are looking for positions do, do apply, and again, we're looking at the resumes that we get for those positions. But those are our key positions, and we've already posted them. We're trying to get ahead of everybody else. I've heard about some other similar positions that are opening in other districts, so we want to make sure that we get the best, high-quality staff for those hard-to-fill positions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for coming this evening and for watching at home. We are going to now go back into executive session, and we will see you again at our next board workshop. Thank you.